Okay, it is 7:00. I would like to welcome everybody to the June 16 meeting of the Town Council. And our Chair, Kristina Skovitch, is at the Morgan graduation this evening. So I, as Vice Chair, will be sitting in for him. I forgot to say start, you can start. Okay, all right. I would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to do in the republic what is just stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now come to the visitors' portion of the agenda. Is there anyone in our audience that would like to speak?
Chief DeMayo.
Would you please stand at the microphone, please? I'm sorry.
Hi, Vince DeMayo, Chief of Police. I just wanted to say in front of the council here that I'm very appreciative and I will speak for the majority of our department heads for the presence of Mr. Kilduff and his guidance. I'm not just saying that because I'm going to come here and ask you for a little money later, but honestly, in my business, all we ever really hear is complaints. You don't hear the good things. I would like the council to know that I think he's been doing a very good job and the rest of us, his department heads, it's a pleasure to work with him. He keeps tight reins on everything and he gives us strong direction. He's been very supportive of everybody in the community and I think we're starting to see the results of him being here. So I just wanted to say that so the council understands and thank the council as well because I think we've been, it's been, it was a big change of government, it changed the way we do business, and I think things have changed in the town much, much, much for the better. So, thank you all.
Very nice. Thank you, Chief DeMayo. And would you like to stand up and introduce yourselves?
My name is Alan Mann. I am the Artistic Director of Opera Theater of Connecticut. With me is Kate Ford, General Director of Opera Theater of Connecticut, and Elaine Gdowski, the President of the George Flynn Classical Concert Series. And I have a question for the council and then possibly a follow-up. Does the Town Council have a finalized plan about opening the theater and other rooms to the arts organizations based here in Clinton?
Okay, thank you. And we will address your question at the item on the agenda that concerns the Town Manager because that would be a general question that he would respond to, and we don't normally respond to queries during this portion of the agenda.
Is that, sorry, is that after the executive session?
No, no, it's just before that. It's item 10, and we have a 14-item agenda.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Item number three, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, would you come up and speak into the microphone, please?
Hi, my name's Jay Mandell, and I'm being considered as an alternate for the Planning and Zoning Committee, and I just want to say I'm here, and if anyone wants to know something from me, I'm here. That's all.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Good evening, Town Council. Andrea Rue, I was really thoughtful after last meeting for the Town Council when you addressed the money coming from the federal money that's coming to us once in a lifetime. And I just wondered if Social Services has been addressed, contacted, checked in with as to what the needs of the people are in the community. And I think obviously, as Carl indicated, the investment in the community and long-term thought is obviously first and foremost, but I think also focusing on the people's needs and the social aspects is, if there's any sort of report or thought that could be given to that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, moving along. Item number three is approval of the minutes for June 2, 2021. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear second? Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, thank you. Item number four is appointments and reappointments. The first list of reappointments is rather lengthy, and rather than look at each one of these individually, I would like to have a motion to accept all of these, or not accept if there's any issue with doing this as one motion for all of these individuals. Would you please let me know at this point? No? So, do I hear a motion to make all these reappointments?
Yeah, I'll make that motion. I think it's...
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the reappointments as listed in the agenda are approved. Now, we have two appointments. One is for, I think we'll handle these separately because they have separate, they have different timeframes. The first appointment is for Jay Mandell, Planning and Zoning alternate seat until November 2021.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. Thank you. Congratulations, Jay. And I, there's a second appointment for Rob Acamporo for the Economic Development Commission from, to move him from an alternate seat to a full seat for a term ending June 30, 2023.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second? Any discussion?
I just want to say something very quickly. The fact that we have a list of names coming in prior to July 1, and I think it's good for civic engagement for the community. I just want to say that. I was very impressed to see all these names, party chairs, Andrea, thank you, the Republican Chair and the Green Chair, putting these names forward. I think this is a great thing.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion and a second for Rob, did we do that? Did we vote already?
Yes.
We didn't do the vote. All right. All right, so we have a motion, a second, to appoint Rob Acamporo. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Clean Water Fund authorizing resolution. Carl, do you want to explain that for a minute?
Sure. So what you've got in the agenda packet is a resolution that the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection is looking for us to act on. It goes towards a WPCC project dating back to July of 2019. The paperwork was sent up to Hartford and seems to have been misplaced, so we're being asked to resubmit the paperwork, but the former government has changed since the original paperwork was signed, so this is to secure Clean Water Fund reimbursement for some WPCC study work that's already been done, and it would give us a reimbursement from them once we have the resolution approved.
How much is that, Carl? Do you know?
55% of the amount, so 55% of $80,000.
Any other questions? All right. I would like to read the authorizing resolution into the minutes. For an authorizing resolution which is required to obtain Clean Water Fund grant, be it resolved that it is in the best interest of the Town of Clinton to enter into contracts with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. In furtherance of this resolution, Carl Kilduff, the Town Manager, is duly authorized to enter into and sign said contracts on behalf of the Town of Clinton. The Town Manager is further authorized to provide such additional information and execute such other documents as may be required by the state or federal government in connection with said contracts, and to execute any amendments and rescissions and revisions thereto. The Town Clerk is authorized to impress the seal of the Town of Clinton on any such document, amendment, rescission, or revision. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve this?
I make that motion.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous, and thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the Middlesex Hospital Fifth Amendment to Agreement, and this is a document that gets renegotiated, using the broad sense of the word, yearly. When Middlesex Hospital first came forward to the town with a proposal whereby the town would help fund the EMS services or ambulance services, they proposed a specific rate per capita, and the original contract had an increase per capita yearly. And I believe that this is the fifth year that they have...
Kept it flat.
Excuse me?
Fifth year keeping it flat.
Yeah, the fifth year of keeping it flat. So this is, this is very nice for the town because it was going to be substantially more than this by this point in town, so I am happy to see this come across our table. So, there is a motion, a suggested motion to enact this. The Town Council of the Town of Clinton hereby authorizes and directs the Town Manager to sign a Fifth Amendment to Agreement with Middlesex Hospital to provide paramedic services for a term of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Sure.
Second? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. All right. And the next item on the agenda is the Finance Director's Report. Do you want to do the report, and then we do the line item transfers after that, correct? Yes. Okay, thank you. Do you want to, thank you.
Hi, everybody. You've all received copies of the May report. May was a relatively quiet month financially speaking, and the transactions were all routine in nature. I'll just briefly review some of the highlights. The results reflect 11 months of the fiscal year. Revenues excluding the one-time receipts are, were $800,000 higher for the 11 months this year than they were last year due to higher tax collections of $500,000 and other town service revenues, which we've seen being strong throughout the year, of another $500,000, offset by lower ECS revenue investment income in this year versus last year. As of today, all state grant revenues have been received, with the last $191,000 that we were expecting was actually received this week from the state, so we're done with the state grant revenues. Tax collections overall are 99.9% of budget. Expenses are tracking in line with the prior year and are 84% of budget, and the month of May, they were $3.4 million. 2.4 of that were requests by the education system for their payroll and accounts payable. There's been no change in the contingency account from last month. It remains at $235,000, and the fund balance still remains at 15.1%. The Finance Department projects that we're working on right now as we're continuing to prep for year-end, and that involves a lot of account analysis and preparation as we have to take the financials from a budget basis as we report internally to a GAAP basis, which is the accounting basis required by the audit, so that requires a lot of work on our part. The auditors will be here next week doing preliminary onsite testing. We're also in the process of setting up the fiscal '22 budgets and processing the final year-end rollover. We've held a kickoff meeting for our accounting system upgrade, and we're waiting to receive the testing database and the online training involved in that. We've made the submission required by OPM for the town to receive its allocation under the American Rescue Act. Clinton's total, as you know, is 3.8 million of that. 50% of that, the 1.9 million, is supposed to be received within two weeks, and the rest of the 50% will be next year. I've been working with the department heads, reviewing their budgets, preparing the line item transfers and their capital forward, carryforward requests. And that concludes my report. Tried to make a quick break because I know we have a long agenda tonight, and I'm prepared to go on to the line item transfers if you would like to.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah.
Would you like me to start with that?
Yes.
Okay. So you received all the line item transfers. There's 13 of them, individual papers that you have. I will tell you that they're all, with the exception of the one for civil preparedness, transfers within a department's line items. So they're just department heads covering their transfers from one line item within their budget to the others. The total of all those transfers that you have there is $97,277.23.
Could you say that again?
Thank you. So if you have any questions on any of those transfers, maybe I can help you with them or...
Do, did you all have a chance, okay.
I have a question. I was just, wasn't aware of this first request that was for the police department. It says a payment to Old Saybrook per, and I can't read the writing, for new hire, I guess recruitment.
Connecticut general state statute, we're hiring an individual that hasn't completed his full two years certification with the Town of Old Saybrook, so by state statute, we're required to pay for 50% of his cost of becoming certified, so that's what that is.
Okay.
Fortunately, that's, and we were going to have to do business before we can get anybody in from the ground level.
Thank you.
May I add something, though? Chief, Chief is being a little nice about it. Really, we're saving quite a minimum money doing it that way, though. If we went out and got a brand-new officer, fresh off the street, trained him, probably costs $200, $225,000. Paying this money to the Town of Saybrook to get an established police officer is a big savings to the Town of Clinton.
Well, thank you for that explanation.
Well, I know the chief is trying to be nice, and he's bragging about what a good job they did, but...
I'm happy now.
That's, that's, that's the whole idea of why they...
And chief, that's all statutory, correct?
That's all statutory, yes. It's 7-294 Delta Delta, the state statute.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions regarding any of these transfers? Did you all have a chance to look at them?
Yes.
You said there was 13 of them?
Yes.
Okay. We got all 13 here? Okay.
Would there be any objection to doing this as one motion to approve these 13 line item transfers totaling $97,277.23, or would you rather have them done individually?
Not for me. I'm just reviewing them right now to make sure there's nothing that I see that's jumping off the table, but I don't have any problems with that. Looks good to me, Carol.
Okay. All right, then I would entertain a motion to complete the line item transfers as presented for, with a total of $97,277.23 as total transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. Thank you. All right, and now we have the capital carryforward request.
Sue? Yes. And I'll just give a brief explanation of what that is. Is the town's current policy for expenditure carryforwards for project appropriations is that all appropriations have a two-year life. So that means that any appropriations that were made in fiscal year '21 carry forward automatically. These are your capital projects. Anything that was appropriated prior to fiscal year '21 needs approval by Town Council to be carried forward. So at this time of year, we always go through all the open projects with the department heads, and we ask them which ones they would like to carry forward, and the list is what was presented in your packets, and they've all provided explanations as to why they want to carry them forward and when they feel that they will be using the dollars by, as well as the original appropriation date and how much the original appropriation was. So you have those by department, Town Counts, Town Manager, Public Works, Fire Assessor, WPCC, the Board of Ed, Technology, and Park and Rec. They each have made requests. The total of those requests is $702,43.17. That's what we're asking to be carried forward.
I'm sorry, what was that total again? This 7024317?
You got it.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Sue?
Yes, I do. It's a comment, really. I see where, of course, you know, capital's always been my value, like, I've always loved that for the last 17 years or so. And, you know, we give departments money. We take it either out of unsur, designated, or plus, or we take it from the taxpayers. And quite frankly, most of these departments, I could see, that's a huge amount of money, $700,000. The nicest way I could say this, when we give the people this money, I think we expect them to use it. Now, I understand that some of these have deadlines, like the school, they will by the time things end up. I see that they've got a lot of things ready for September, 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 about six things, so they'll use up 105 of their money, which is okay. The one that bothers me, and let me get to the short line, the one that bothers me the most is the top one, quite frankly, about digitizing these paper records. And they got money in '17 for $6,000. I don't think they ever used it yet. Then they came back and they got money in '18, $25,000, and they haven't used that yet. And then they got money in '19 for $24.5, and they haven't used any of that yet. And then we gave them more money in '20, another $36,729. And what I'm trying to say, I guess in a short one, is they have all these dates about, they'll probably be used in '23, '22, '23. Why did we give them all that money back in '17, '18, '19, and they didn't expect to use it to '23? When we give people money, I think, and I can tell you that the police department does a great job, Public Works, they use the money we give them in the same calendar year. And I just don't like the idea that there's a large amount of money being just carried over, carried over. They're not going to use it, give it back.
Can I respond a little bit to that?
Sure.
Being in an office that is going through document management, trust me, this is a colossal project. It is bigger than you can even imagine, and a very lengthy project because what is there in paper, I mean, go look in the assessor's office and try and fathom how to, how to digitally preserve all those documents manually or, and with the use of a document management It's not something that happens overnight. We had a Trino syst, or a system installed by a company called Trino in Land Hughes three years ago, and we are still, still tweaking it and figuring out how best to work it. And that system is, the initial idea was to extend that system, say, to the tax assessor or other offices in town. So the money was, has been put aside to extend those services out, but we've run into a lot of hurdles. And frankly, when the time comes that it's, that it's clean and clear and operational, it will cost all of that to get it done. It's, it's a lot of man-hours, it's a lot of data, it's a lot of work, and I guarantee it will cost all of that. I'm not saying it shouldn't have been done by now, but having to work with the system that we have is, I can, I know why it's taking...
I just, I guess all people on notice that, you know, we expect the money to be used...
I get it. I understand what you're saying.
Because that money, if that was the case, and they didn't know they were going to use it for four to five years, they could have asked just for a small amount when they used that up.
No one, no one thought it was going to take this long.
Okay. All right. Now, that's a good explanation, thank you, Madam Chairman. But I'm just saying that, I guess I was just, that caught me.
I wish it was done, too.
That the other departments use it as we give it to them, and I like that. But, you know, I don't want to see money just hanging, hanging, hanging.
And I do understand, believe me. Tim?
Yeah, I have a question. I don't know if it's better addressed to you or to Carl, but I'll let you decide. I was kind of astounded to see $122,000 set aside for repairs to the riverbank behind the New Morgan School. I, I haven't seen any work started myself, and I'll admit, I haven't been back there in the last few weeks, but I continually go back there to see if there's been any work started. And is this supposedly the extension that they're supposed to be building? I'm not sure what this $121,000 is for.
This goes back to the flooding incident by the school?
Yeah.
So the town has been maneuvering through the regulatory process in order to get everyone to sign off on it, so you need the state through DEEP to sign off on it, the Army Corps of Engineers needs to sign off on it, federal funding agencies are also involved, so FEMA has to sign off on it, and then NRCS is also weighing in. So we're dealing with four agencies trying to coordinate their calendars, as well as getting them out in the field during COVID, which everyone was hesitant to do. And then you get into this dance of who goes first. So Army Corps wouldn't, was available but wouldn't go out in the field until DEEP went out in the field first, but DEEP wasn't working out of there, working at home and not going out in the field, so it's a project that has dragged on. The majority of it is to be funded by FEMA and NRCS, though. So this is the town's funding that the town set aside.
So we have to pay for it, and then we'll get reimbursed?
This is our...
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, so, fine, then it's $121,000 that will get reimbursed at a later time, after the work has been completed.
Correct. The project can't go until it's permitted.
And is this the extension that they're talking, originally, they, they fixed the banks for maybe 20 feet, and then they said that there would be an extension completed at a later date if it was found to be necessary. Is this what they're referring to?
The banks, the stonework that you see originally was just immediate stabilization.
Yeah.
So now we're going through the process of what it would finally look like, and protection, protecting the channel beyond whatever stone was dumped there. So if that's...
More downriver.
So if that's the extension you're referring to, then that would be...
Yeah, okay, fine. All right. Understood.
Okay, any other questions? So do I hear a motion to approve this capital carryforward request for $702,43.17?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in, any discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. I'm looking at the next item on the agenda, which is council discussion of future projects, and I'm going to ask for a motion to table that for tonight because we're missing two members of our council, and I would like to...
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Do you, discussion?
Discussion, I'd like to come back in two weeks and have a vibrant discussion about some of these projects we want to pursue. I think...
Yeah, I was ready for tonight, but that's good. I go with the chair.
I'm sorry.
No, no.
Dennis, I'm sorry.
It's nothing that we can't wait two weeks.
No.
It's just the things that we've been always talking about, for instance, like, let's, I'd like to see us get moving on that fire and marshal fees so that they can get those implemented.
Well, you know what?
With all this construction coming down the line, I want to start making money for the town.
Well, that might be a comment for Agenda Item 11. Town Council Committee Liaison, oh, no, I mean, sorry.
Whatever.
Hmm. Maybe this is the time for that.
No problem.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to table that. Maybe we need to rescind that motion, because there are topics that.
I would like to make a comment, too.
Okay. Well, then, would you make a motion to?
Absolutely. If you want to.
Okay, thank you.
Discuss it this evening and discuss it two weeks as well.
That sounds great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like Dennis, I would like to make sure that the Pearson School gets on the agenda. We talked about discussing that. We haven't made it yet, but I think it's imperative for the town that we begin the discussion on what we're going to do with that site. So I would like to recommend that we especially add that to part of the discussion.
Yeah, I concur.
Yep.
I think, you know, we have to find out, do we push the state? We don't get involved with that? Well, like you said, Tim, two weeks is fine, Madam Chairman.
And you, did you have some further comment or different topic, Dennis, that you wanted to?
No, that would have been my second thing that I would have mentioned tonight. You know, we should be starting to move on the Pearson, definitely move on that fire marshal thing as quickly as possible, so that we can get that going with all this new construction coming into town. And I guess, I had a third one, but I'll sort of slip for a second. Let somebody else talk, and maybe they'll come back.
No, I think that's, I agree with Dennis. I think we should sit down and maybe even reserve a half hour for each of us giving a list of things that we would like to move forward with. And, you know, maybe we don't have an exact policy plan right now, but we have these ideas, and maybe we can get them into positions to move forward.
I would suggest, if you were to come forward with an idea for a future project, that you outline that and define it and structure it. Because ideas are easy. It's implementation that takes the work. So if you have an idea of, I mean, obviously, Pearson is huge on everyone's agenda, but we need to address the steps involved in coming to a decision, and who will do that? Will it be a commission, a committee, appointed individuals? We have to structure the discussion so that we can see some forward movement. We all want to see Pearson, a decision made as far as Pearson.
One other comment, on behalf of our chief and all the good work he's done in the community, I certainly think that also on the agenda, we should talk about this human rights initiative.
Oh, absolutely.
That was brought forth to us two weeks ago, and I think that's an important initiative that we should bring up as well, and I would like to make sure that that is a part of our list.
That, as a matter of fact, Chris Bisanti and, they had asked for us to have a decision tonight, but because we knew there were going to be at least two members absent, we tabled the, not tabled, but moved the discussion to the next meeting.
As long as we do.
All right. So.
Colonel, may I suggest, too, that we send what our thoughts are on these capital projects and some operational projects. Maybe we funnel them to Carl ahead of time, so we get to see them before our meeting, so we can kind of flesh these out.
That makes a lot of sense. And so that you were prepared to take some action when the topic comes up.
At least to discuss it in depth, and hopefully whoever, again, we send something that you get to review, let's say I make a position, get to review that at least, and we can just think about it before we get here and get hit with it.
Yep. That sounds good.
I remember my third thing now. Way back, I don't know, maybe a month or two ago, we said we were going to probably have a workshop or something. Weren't we going to address the realigning that blight ordinance? And sort of tweak it and get it so it could be enforceable? And that just sort of just pulled away. So I'd like to get that workshop or something, and let's work on that and get that going.
Okay. So the topic came up about addressing the blight ordinance and the structure and the framework and all that, and the call for participants for a committee went out, and I was the only one to raise my hand. So a committee of one is not very effective, so it's just kind of gone by the boards, because nobody else wanted to participate. So.
I would think the CEO would be a participant in that.
She would be. She is, she has contributed information.
The last discussion was there would be a subcommittee of the council that would work on it. So Carol volunteered. I provided her with background information, other ordinances, policy documents, so that at least we could have a conversation.
I didn't realize that was to be that workshop. I put my hand up.
Kathy has contributed a lot of information. I mean, I've got stuff. I just talk to myself enough as it is.
I'll volunteer to be on that.
Okay. All right. So now we can move forward with that.
Now we have a subcommittee.
Glad to be there with you, Carol.
Good, good, good.
Good.
All right. Anything else? That's great, Dennis. That's progress right there.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a big topic.
COVID is over. It's time for us to get on the horse and start really getting things moving.
Yeah. Thank you. Anything else? All right. So, moving on, item number nine is the chairman's report. Don't have one, so, either a chair or a report, so. Number 10, town manager's report. Carl?
Okay. So to the questions that were posed during the visitors' comments section, so opening the building for the arts. The building is open, and we've made arrangements for the visual arts, as you can see, in this room, and they're going to have an art show next month in this room, which, as is noted in my report, necessitates we move back to the Rose Room for our meetings. So the visual arts has not been a significant issue. The performing arts has been a challenge. We have had a staffing issue to navigate before we could provide the degree of support that's necessary for the building. It was my understanding that the opera has sought dates in the fall, which, as of this morning, I did not think we had issues with. So if there's issues with that.
But if that's so, we, in fact, this morning, received contrary information from the office. So then we had to do a follow-up with another arts organization. We have settled on the schedule. But my question would be, if there is going to be, if it's just going to be switched on and everything is fine, then that's great. But if there are going to be other provisions about it, can the council ask that as part of the planning, that arts organizations such as the Flynn, Opera Theater of Connecticut, and the other organizations, we've been here 35 years, and we have repaired a lot, we did a lot of the original repairs that George Flynn has been here for over two decades. At one point, Elaine was the one who helped get curtains for the side windows, because they were falling apart and so on. We're very invested in the building, and we would very much like to be a part of any discussion that is anything other than, you know, it's open, you're all fine to go, as of September 1, everything is normal. So that's really what we would need to know. If we're doing an opera in November, we have to get our casting done. We have contracts. It's all normally very late. Normally, it takes us nine months, if not longer, to get our cast together and everything done. We have PR that has to be sent out. We send our PR to something like 14 different states in the country. So, you know, we need to know in a timely fashion that things are all okay, that there will be no regulations concerning seating, that we can, you know, sell all the seats as required in some cases. So if there isn't, if this isn't just a turnkey operation, can the council, you know, make sure that arts organizations that do use the performing arts spaces are included in the discussion? We've been coordinating with similar organizations who are facing this throughout the state and throughout the country. So we are really up to date on.
Have you requested time to sit down with Carl and?
We can't get through the front office. When we call the front office to ask for a meeting, we have been told it's, there isn't the time. So our request is that this be put on the agenda for the July 7 meeting to discuss this.
I also, excuse me, I also wrote an email to Carl, and he responded. And so we are trying to get forward with concerns.
So you're looking for a specific date from which you can move forward normally? Is that correct?
You know, as Ellen said, we are professionals, so we have to act like professionals. You know, we hire people from all over the world, and we pay them extremely well. So, you know, it's not a big and now show. So we have to come forward.
All right. Okay. Well, I appreciate your.
To the town is immense. We bring in people, they go to the restaurant. I mean, not only do they get to see Clinton, but, you know, they go to the restaurants, they go to the gas stations, they do all, you know.
Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate that, and we have heard your concerns, and we will do everything we can to move forward and make sure that we can get these opportunities put back in place for Clinton's edification here.
Does Carl have your contact information?
More than once. So is it possible that we are able to set up a meeting within the next week or so?
Can, I will ask Mary to give you a call with Carl's schedule, and you can work that out.
Thank you.
Okay? All right. And your phone, I'll just write down your phone number, Ellen. What is it?
What's another thing, whether you want just Ellen or you want Flynn, you want, you know, what is the group?
Okay. Well, why don't I take both of your phone numbers, and we'll figure this out going forward?
We do have their contacts.
Okay. All right. Mary has your contact phone number.
Yes.
You will hear from the town manager's office. Okay. Thank you. Now, Carl, would you please continue?
And could this be on the agenda on the July 7 meeting?
I don't believe so.
Well, I can't tell you yes or no at this point, because you'd have to have a concrete idea of, I mean, if you're talking about approval, an agenda item to approve a schedule for you moving forward?
No, we don't need the town council for that.
Right.
That's not.
So what would the item be that you were looking to have on the agenda?
Well, to discuss not only the reopening, but there are other concerns we have about the rental process.
Well, that isn't generally a town council discussion. That would be more a discussion to have with the town manager, and then the town manager would come to the town council with his considerations on that process.
So that we can do that when we meet with?
You can have that discussion with him when you meet with him. Right. And then he will determine how to go forward with the most equitable agreement.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
The other item that was raised was using Federal American Recovery Plan Act funding to support social services in town. The availability of funding has brought out a number of organizations that are looking for funding. I've had conversations with arts groups in the region looking for funding. The local soup kitchen also is looking for capital contribution from all towns to support a refrigerated truck that would bring in foodstuffs to support folks in Clinton. Beyond that, we have to be careful that we're not duplicating what is already pre-existing state programs, so rent subsidies are coming out of the state. Some other support mechanisms are also coming out of the state. So we want to make sure the state has a clear plan, and if there's a gap, we fill that on the local level. The state plan has not been approved. It's, the governor proposed something to the General Assembly. The General Assembly has not acted on its plan, and they haven't negotiated a settlement plan between the two of them. So I don't know where the gaps are between what the state's going to do and what the local level response could be. In terms of the written report that you have in front of you, the state budget was passed, which provided stability to ECS funding for the town for this year and next year. ECS funding will drop after that, as it is supposed to, so we'll have a degree of stability in that as a major revenue source from the state, but it will diminish over time based on the formula change that was put into place. Remote meetings, a bill died in the Senate that allowed for continued remote meetings. The governor's executive order only carries through to the end of this month. The Budget Implementer Bill, which is currently being debated in Hartford as we speak, buried in it is the ability to continue electronic meetings through April 30, 2022. It is permissive. It is not a mandate that you shall hold them. You can have them. New rules were put in place based on the implementer for how votes are supposed to be managed, notices are supposed to be managed. So it's a little different than what we've done during the COVID time, but at least the capacity is there to deliver that. At our next meeting, we will be in the Rose Room, as I noted earlier, and the Yukon Stormwater Corps will be in town, looking at town-owned properties for how we can leverage their resources to help with the stormwater mandate that the town is facing from the state. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Pearson needs to be an executive session conversation, so I do have materials to report to you on that, but within the confines of executive session.
Okay. Carl, you listed here, I'm sorry, zoning reform. It was a topic for consideration. A number of changes to local zoning were created, but municipal opt-outs were included. What does that exactly mean? I'm trying to follow some of these zoning bills and what came of them and how they would affect Clinton, but what does that mean, that they were created, but we have the opt-out option?
So there were a number of bills pending this session that were focused on zoning reform. They all got cobbled together into one bill and then modified from there. So the requirements were changing parking ratios, requirement for accessory dwelling units in backyards to increase housing stock. Those both had local option opt-outs. So there's a statutory process by which Planning and Zoning Commission could say, no, we don't want to do that. Accessory dwelling unit, there is a regulation that was just recently passed here, so I don't imagine we'd be opting out on that. Parking ratio would be a further discussion. There was reference to remove character out of zoning regulations, so that community character is not a criteria by which you evaluate applications. The intent is to tie that in with affordable housing. Probably the more significant piece to come out of it was the mandate for training for planning and zoning commissioners, which I think everyone in the state generally agrees, planning and zoning commissioners could always use more training to understand their role and responsibility.
Can I ask a question about that opt-outs?
Yeah.
Is there a timeframe attached to that, or to, if the commission wanted to opt-out of one of these programs?
CCM is going to be providing the process to all municipalities, so we know what the mandate is and then what the opt-out process is.
Okay. But right now, that is in place, and that is being utilized, the new parking regulations?
No. So the bill gets passed, but it doesn't go into effect the day it passed. It has an implementation date. Usually, state bills are implemented in October.
Okay. All right.
Only the electronic meeting piece, because it's buried in the budget implementer, goes into effect on 7/1. So if it's buried in the budget bill, it goes on the 7/1. Normal statute kicks out to October 1.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
And then one other question, Carl. In the bottle bill you here mentioned, requirement for DEEP to develop an incentive program to support communities interested in implementing unit-based pricing or pay-as-you-throw programs. How would that impact us? And could we contact DEEP and show some initial interest?
So the bill requires DEEP to come up with something. They don't have anything. So we have to wait for DEEP to come up with an incentive program. There's information out there generally on unit-based pricing for solid waste. The model here is a little different. different, because we don't have a uniform solid waste program. Some people have it picked up at the curb, other people bring it to the transfer station. So, it'd require a little bit more work. There are vendors that will help you through the process. The DEEP incentive program based on recycling conversations that took place earlier this year was to provide funding for community education, absorb any startup costs, things of that nature, that would support introducing a pay-as-you-throw program. There was a bill initially to have it, a mandate out of the state, because this is all tied to solving the MIRA problem and solid waste issues in the state of Connecticut. But that failed pretty quickly.
All right. Anything else from anybody? Any questions? Okay, moving along. Item 11, Town Council Committee Liaison Reports. Anybody have a report for him?
I have a report based on the Economic Development Commission meeting that was held Tuesday, June 8. I think the most important information comes from the new owner of the Chittenden property, and he would like to move forward immediately on starting changes on the facade of his portion of the building.
The post office square?
Yeah, on the corner. So, I think that's a good sign, and should be a way for us and the EDC to begin implementation on a program, to start that project seriously, not just lip service, but seriously. And I think that with one owner willing to begin renovations, I'm hoping that others will step forward and do the same. So, this is something that we need to make sure that it's being moved forward, and that we don't step on our feet in getting this implemented. So, we already have an owner that's willing. So, that's number one.
Tim, a quick question. Is that tied into the overall architectural plan that they're developing?
Yes, yes. He's willing to look at that. He's willing to implement changes based upon the work that they have completed. I'm not sure that there has been any work that's been completed. There might be some initial design work that's been discussed, but as far as actual renditions of what it might look like, I haven't seen anything. And I don't know if anybody else in the council has seen anything. So, that's something that, again, that's really what we have to do, is EDC needs to get involved and get all of the preliminary work done, so that owners can really take a look at what their recommendations are going to be, and whether it's going to be acceptable or not. But we do have an owner that wants to start immediately as we speak. So, I think I want to make sure that all of you are aware that this is something that we probably need to make sure that EDC, and as the liaison, I've mentioned that, that they need to step up and get this going. Also, I was told that the underpass coming from 81, the walkway underneath, and then coming out by the cleaners, Pat's cleaners, evidently there's some work being done by a group of volunteers, I'll say, on design work, on how to upgrade that, so that you can make it a safe, attractable walkway from one part of town to the other part of town. So, that supposedly is being done. And I think that there's further discussions about the business manager that is going to be hired, or is going to be part of EDC to help communicate with the townspeople or the businesses in town, to make sure that they have representation through the town council. There's a gentleman who's a new citizen in this town. His name is Tom Foster. He comes from Long Meadow, and he came to the meeting and talked about some ideas that he had and work that he did in the town of Long Meadow, Massachusetts. So, things are very positive with the Economic Development Commission. This is really the first time in a long time that they actually have some important work to get completed, and we can't allow them to dilly-dally around. We need to put their feet to the fire and make sure that they're getting this work done for the town. That's my report.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Inland Wetlands met on June 1, and something that, I read Kathy King's report. Apparently, there's been a lot of dumping in the Inland, Inland Wetlands, and entitled wetlands, and it's being referred to DEEP. So, that's the first time I've really heard of that, the numerous complaints she phrased it as, of people dumping in the wetlands. Other things, Inland Wetlands discussed the Carter Hill Bridge. They also discussed Indian River Landing. The sediment erosion controls are functioning properly. Planning and zoning met on June 14. The minute just came out, I think it was this morning or yesterday afternoon, so my report's pretty short, but they did discuss the rear lot at Davis Farm Road. They did discuss the grooming, boarding, daycare zoning regulation, which would be pertaining to that proposed veterinary office down at the old CVS. Vehicular access conservation subdivisions down at the Hammocks, and then a mixed-use development on 34 West Main Street are some of the things that came up. So, lots going on.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll give my report. I attended the police commission two days ago, Monday. As far as their budget and all, they're right on track. They're doing an excellent job there, learning a lot of communications with the town manager about the communications department. They're trying to set up, I guess, eliminating the part-timers and getting all full-timers. And they've done an excellent job. I've got to say that, got to commend, not because they're just sitting here, I would have said it anyway, but, I mean, the police department has been hit with a lot of curveballs this year, and it's to their benefit that every, they just keep pulling the rabbit out of the hat over there and haven't come to this town council for any extra money, even though they keep getting hit with a curveball here, curveball there. The chief and those people, commission, have worked away how to manipulate, you know, move things around their budget. So, the police department, I think, deserves a, you know, pat on the back for that. And other items that I'd like to say is, we are hiring that police officer. He will be coming on board here, I think, Wednesday.
Swear him in Monday, sir.
I'm going to swear him in Monday. And of course, it'll be a very short learning period, because he is an officer already, and he's a Clinton boy. I think I can say his name right without getting in trouble.
Sure.
It's Charles Kostick. We know him as Chuckie Kostick. You know him, I'm sure.
No, I do.
And, yeah.
Good and bad.
Chuckie, hey, I know him because he was a good football player. But anyways, he'll be a fine addition to the police. And that now brings you up to full staff, isn't it? Again, chief.
Yes.
The captain next to him, Captain Petro, came up in the meeting two days ago, the fact that our department is going to have quite a few qualified boat operators on each shift. I think he said something like, the day shift's going to have four or five, night shift, 12:00 to 8:00 is going to have. Bob Voas, we all know Bob in town, has been instructing the police officers on the high seas, getting them all certified. And sooner or later, we're going to have quite a number of our police officers, I would say maybe three-quarters, that are going to be eligible to operate their boats in case of emergencies. And that's a great thing for a little shoreline town. I also wanted to say one more little thing here. We had Corporal Frye, he's our K-9 officer, was involved in a large drug bust, and he received a commendation, and it's a feather in town of Clinton's cap, the outstanding work that this corporal did in this large, I guess it was a regional, why breakdown, chief?
Oh, it's just, nearly 500 bags of fentanyl and heroin that would have been on the street. It's all packaged for individual sale, and he was awarded the 2020 Narcotics Detection Award by the Connecticut Police Work Dogs Association at an event of CPCA last week on Thursday. So, again, just fine work, and it's really the dedication of Corporal Frye. He puts a lot of effort into training and professionalism, and, again, that's drugs that would have been on the street, heavy-duty, serious narcotics, which we know causes deaths.
I'm glad you're here tonight, chief. My final thing is just a little comment about both the police department and DPW. They've been working hand-in-hand to resolve quite a couple of issues in and around town. One is over on the Hammocks Road. I guess you've probably heard or not heard about the problems with no parking signs, parking signs, this or that, people's access to clamming and things. Well, between the police department and DPW, they've worked out an agreement there on Hammock Road, where they're going to set aside a small parking area off the road, so it doesn't at all disturb traffic in that area. And the neighbors seem to, that they were there last Monday night, seem satisfied with the fact that people won't be parking all over their lawns and whatever and blocking the street. So, I am, again, DPW will be coming forward with the police department. The second thing that they did was they took care of that crazy corner that's been sitting on Liberty and Glenwood Road. For years, we tried to make that turn, taking that right. It was very hard, especially on us old-timers. And so, anyway, they sort of smoothed it out, and, again, DPW working hands-in-hands with our police department has worked that out. A stop sign will be coming on shortly, preventing the southbound, which has always been just coming right down Glenwood Road, nonstop. It'll be a three-way stop. There'll be a T-section, and it'll be a three-way stop. So, all we'll have to do is teach everybody how the man on the right has the right, you know?
You're going to have to bring out that stop sign.
We'll have to go back to the old school, how to do things on the stop sign. But anyways, so, there's been a lot of progress in that nature, and that's my report.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, the next item on the agenda is executive session. I would like to invite Chief DeMayo and...
Captain Petro.
Oh, it's Captain Petro to stay, along with Mary Scatino and Carl Kilduff.
I make that motion.
Thank you. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Before we leave, I just wanted to...
Motion?
Item, agenda item number 13, the building official position. Is there a motion to be made?
I make a motion that the town manager go forward with the hiring process of the town inspector.
I'll second that motion.
Building official.
You look so happy, Dennis.
Well...
Do I hear a second?
I did.
Is there a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Carl will go for the same.
But you abstain, right?
And I abstain. Okay, item number 14, adjournment.
Come on.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you.